Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
We will now bring this legislative day.
Work session.
Yeah, work session to order here. I apologize, I'm looking at something else.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Rafferty. Yes. I'd like the council to please, and the people in attendance, please remember, in your thoughts and prayers, the grandmother and her granddaughter that were killed on Girdwood Road by a 22-year-old, allegedly 22-year-old drunk driver at quarter of seven in the morning. And it's really been very, it's a very tragic incident that has really upset the entire neighborhood. So if you please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kett. Why don't we start with Mr. Steve Walsh. We'll go to page six. Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Walsh.
Fiscal matter one. The administration is requesting an amendment to a contract with Clean Venture Incorporated. They provide packing, removal, hauling, and disposal services for household hazardous waste from the county's central acceptance facility. And household hazardous waste is paint, pesticides, and chemicals. The existing contract has an offset limit of $476,950. We'd ask for an amendment of $218,050, yielding a total contract offset limit of $695,000. We need this. We have seen an upswing in the usage of that facility since we moved it to the central part of the county. And this amendment gets us to the end of this 10-year contract.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions? Any of the members? No questions. Let's move on to page nine. Rumel Klepper? Klepper?
Yes. Fiscal matter two. We're requesting an addendum to a contract with Rumel Klepper &amp; Call, LLP. They provide on-call engineering services for pump station design. And they have an existing contract of $5 million. We're requesting a $2.5 million addendum to the contract, which would yield a total contract value of $7.5 million. And this was for the entire five-year contract period. We have other firms under contract right now who do that work. Those firms are either busy or new to us, and we're starting them out slowly. This firm does a good job with managing multiple projects at the same time. So there are some projects in the pipeline that we want to give them. Miller's Island, Penwood Road, Fort Howard, Turkey Point, and Corsica Road pump stations.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Almond.
Mr. Walsh, how many pumping stations do we have?
123, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Moving on to fiscal matter number three, page 13. Grade Line Construction Company.
Administration is requesting approval of a contract with Grade Line Construction Company to provide on-call snow removal and salt application services. This is a common contract, which council has seen in the past. The contract would commence this upcoming snow season, which begins in November of 18, and continue through April 30 of 2019, and run at nine automatic renewal periods. Compensation for the contract would not exceed the amount appropriate for snow removal during the entire nine-year, six-month term. And this vendor is supplying seven triaxle dump trucks with plows and spreaders, and of course, drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions? Hearing none, thank you very much, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Call up Mr. Keith Dorsey. We'll move on to fiscal matter number four, which is page 16.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. The administration is requesting approval for two on-call contracts for industrial hygienist services. One is with Professional Services Industries, and the other is with Global Consulting, Inc. The contracts are for one year with four one-year renewal, and the possibility of an additional 90-day extension on the end of any of those terms. The total amount, not to exceed for the full five-year, three-month period, would be $325,000.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey. Any questions? Comments? Yes, Councilwoman Almond.
Mr. Dorsey, why was there such a difference between the compensation and the expenditure?
You mean with the last contract? The previous contract? I don't know how they, you know, got to the original amount of 800-plus thousand dollars, but the amount that was needed was significantly lower. This year's calculation, this calculation of 325 is essentially taking what was the lower of the two bids, allowing for 5% cost increment for each one of those years, and then adding a 20% contingency. That's how you get to the 325 for that amount. I'm not sure how they initially estimated the 800,000-plus. It may have been something that happened prior to that where they had a significant remedial cost. Most of the costs related to these contracts now are small. It's basically air, water, or mold, and, you know, evaluations. And so let's say if there is a water intrusion, we have water coming in, leak or something, we have to call out the crew to test the air and the walls to make sure there's no mold growing. And so the actual experience we're having is a lot lower than what may have prompted that original $800,000 contract.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman.
Mr. Dorsey, just a quick question. Is this on-call service also used for Baltimore County public schools, or do they have their own service for this?
I would imagine they have their own. This would just be for us.
Just for county?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Mr. Dorsey? Hearing none, thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey. We'll now come with Major Landsman. Fiscal matter six, page 21.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Here this morning, or this afternoon, to ask for approval to spend $64,000 in grant funding from our 2016 DNA backlog reduction grant from NIGA. This is for Life Technologies to come and validate our DNA quantifier trio kit. This kit determines how much DNA is present in a particular sample of a, if we extract DNA from a stain, this will tell us, before we've moved on to the next step of the process, where the actual examination, this will tell us if there's any inhibitors, such as dye from blue jeans, present in the sample, whether there's male DNA present, or if it is degraded. Now, that, my experience and background in, you know, DNA evidence is more on the investigative side. I have the supervisor of our DNA unit, Laura Palowski, here with me today. But the way this relates to DNA backlog is that doing this quantifier trio kit prior to moving on to the next step, this gives us the ability to know if any of those inhibitors, any of those problems exist before we get so far in the process where we've done, we're in the middle of an examination. Now we say, this sample is degraded. We have to go back and redo work, and that contributes to the backlog. So this is, again, is part of our 2016 grant, which we have to use by the end of this year. If approved, this would commence, I believe, October 1st. When we would actually get the validation back by November. So if you have questions as far as DNA process, I have Laura here, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? Let me see. Why don't we move on to fiscal matter number seven, page 23. This is a lease with the, this lease substation?
Yes. The Towson Precinct Substation, 1,055 Taylor Avenue, which is currently located in the Hillendale, Hillendale Square Office Center. We have been there since 2008. The lease is up. We are looking to renew for another five-year term with the option to extend another five years. The monthly rent there is $2,724. Total cost, $163,440 for the five-year term. The facility, it's not fancy, but it is located strategically in a part of Towson Precinct on the east side of our precinct that services the communities along Lockraven Boulevard. I myself was precinct commander there for three and a half years, and I know members of the council attended both scheduled and impromptu meetings on a variety of issues. And not that, you know, the Towson Precinct isn't a great facility, but folks on the east side of our precinct in the evening don't want to come over here and park in the parking garage, or find street parking to come into the main precinct. And they have come to know that facility as their office, their base of operation. They can get in touch with our outreach folks, usually on day work, and most evenings, somebody's present there. The individual neighborhoods, many of them hold their community, their monthly community meetings there. Our police community relations council meeting is there. But like I said, you know, when issues have come up, whether it be an after-school, kind of disorderly, kids at the bus stop issue, or maybe even, one that I dealt with was a rash of burglaries, where we have to communicate directly with the folks that are involved. That facility has served us well. So that is why we're asking for the renewal of that lease.
Yes, Councilwoman Bev.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Major.
Good to see you.
I miss you at the precinct. I just, I was happy to see this agreement come back up because that is such an asset to the community to have that substation there as well. And I know the community also uses it for space, and your COP, have a very active COP there. So I know that I'm going to certainly support this because I would not want it to leave my community.
Thank you.
Councilman Marks.
I'll echo my colleague, Councilwoman Bev's comments. This is a terrific resource for the Lockraven Boulevard corridor. I know there's always an issue of cost, but I think it's good to decentralize some of our police functions. In two months or so, we'll have another mischief night gathering there, but it is used frequently, and I wholeheartedly support continuing the lease here.
Councilman Crand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Major. Just out of curiosity, do we have other substations in Baltimore County? How many substations do we have in the county? Do you know?
One off the top of my head is the Woodlawn Substation, which is actually more of a full-service substation. When I worked in the Cockeysville Precinct, we had one at the Bridgely Road. I don't believe that one's still operating. But as far as I know, Towson is the, Towson and Woodlawn are the two that have actual designated substations.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes. I too was very happy to see this appropriation in the fiscal notes. When I represented this area in the late 1990s and early 2000s, I know how hard the community worked to get that substation. And I know what a positive impact you had, it has on that community. So I'm very happy to see that we're going to renew the lease.
Any additional questions? Comments? Thank you very much, Major. And I guess I'll reach out to someone later on. I know in my community, somebody had asked about a substation. And I understand that there's some criteria, but the officers there, I think, spelled it out pretty clearly, but they weren't sure of all the criteria that went involved in it. So, all right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We'll move right along to, let's see, page 26. This is Amy Grazzi, about an exchange of property.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. This resolution authorizes the county to convey approximately 20.43 acres of property valued at $615,000 located at 4812 East Chopper Road near the intersection of Chapel Road and Perry Hall to the Board of Education for the construction of the new Northeast Area Elementary School. In exchange, the county will receive 30.5 acres of land valued at $2.27 million located at 531 Dale Avenue adjacent to Overly High School. This exchange of property is required because the county property was encumbered with program open space funds. And in order for this property to be converted to a school site, we had to replace it with property of equal or better value and equal or better recreational value. So this exchange was reviewed and approved prior to the construction of the school by DNR Program Open Space staff, and they approved it. We have removed the encumbrances and restrictions from the county property for the construction of the school, and we are ready to move forward with the actual conveyance and execution of the deeds if you approve the transaction.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grazzi. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I want to acknowledge also the school system, Mr. Jablon, Mr. Muller was also involved, Mr. Homan. This is one of three schools that will be built in the northeast over the next few years to deal with overcrowding. It's a terrific new school. Will open this September. I want to thank Councilwoman Bev's for also working on this transaction, but especially all those involved in your office and others to make it happen.
Any more questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilman Kett?
I just have a question. With the property next to, what school is it?
Overly High School.
Overly High School. Are the restrictions associated with open space apply now to that property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bev?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to add something. Thank you, Councilman Marks, for mentioning me. This is just really a good example of how we can sometimes work together behind the scenes to make something happen for the community. This was a problem a couple of years ago with this transaction, and both communities, we needed the school, and Overly was also looking for some open space, so this was just a perfect match for that situation. So I'm really glad we could work this out, and we got a really good result.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any additional questions? Comment? Thank you, Ms. Grazzi.
Thank you.
Move right along to page 29, miscellaneous business number three, Ms. Andrea Van Arsdale.
The administration is requesting council approval of Resolution 6118 to authorize a 10-year payment in lieu of taxes to Red Run Station Limited Partnership to provide financial assistance for a rental housing project located at 106330 Red Run Boulevard. The agreement would become effective July 1st, 2019.
No questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Van Arsdale. We'll go along with page 34. The first miscellaneous business is non-competitive bids awards. Okay, we'll go past that. We'll move right along to bills. Number one, page one, Bill 55-18, Ms. Alman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill 5518 concerns a sign in the community business. This was vetted through the community associations and it concerns freestanding brick sign that the community and the developer have agreed to. It's a refurbished building and the sign will just add a little more class to the location than it was before.
There we go. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ms. Alman. Next, page four, Bill 57-18. Councilman Katz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, let me say that I am withdrawing Bill 5618, which is a tax, property tax credit for senior veterans. And the reason I'm doing that is that during this past legislative session, the Maryland General Assembly passed and legislation which is mandated on the county, which for seniors that are 70 or older with a certain, below a certain income, we get tremendous tax breaks. So that's the reason why I'm withdrawing 5618. With 5718, this is the legislation that would give our first responders a 25, up to a $2,500 tax credit, property tax credit phased in over a period of time. First of all, Anne Rundle and Howard County have already enacted this property tax cut. So I see down the road that Baltimore County is going to be at a disadvantage in regard to attracting police, firefighters, corrections officers, volunteers, et cetera, simply because those counties are giving this property tax break. Let me just say, first of all, in regard to the advantages to this bill, in regard to the police, what we want to see is, we would like to see as many police in Baltimore County live in our county. It's been shown that communities where police actually live, that it is a deterrent to crime. Secondly, we know of with the Baltimore County correctionals, correctional facility, there have been shortages in the past and in essence, you know, we need to be in front of this issue so this doesn't happen again. And the same with the firefighters in regard to having them live in the county, obviously it's beneficial to our county if the firemen live in Baltimore County. And lastly, when it comes to our volunteer fire companies, this will be a tremendous recruitment tool to say to people who are considering joining the volunteer fire company that should they join and should they become active in the company, fighting fires, et cetera, EMS, that they are eligible for such a tax break should they live in Baltimore County. And of course, I guess some of you are thinking, well, obviously if you're a volunteer for a Baltimore County fire company, volunteer fire company, you live in the county, well, that's not always the case. We do have some volunteer firefighters at Route 30, et cetera, who actually don't live in Baltimore County, so this won't help them, but it will help the majority of the volunteer fire companies. It will help with their recruitment. And you realize how much money that the county saves due to our volunteer fire companies. And the, in regard to all these individuals, whether it be the police, fire, correctional, volunteer, fire workers, the sacrifice that they make to keep our county safe. And you realize that nothing really matters if you don't have a safe environment. All you have to do is look in Baltimore City and the schools. There's problems in the schools because there's problems in the neighborhoods. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. So we must ensure that we are going to get the best people as firefighters, as policemen, as correctional officers, and as our volunteer firefighters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? We have several people signed up for the bill, starting to testify would be John Ripley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I want to thank you, start off by thanking you for this opportunity to testify. As you all know, my name is John Ripley. I'm the president of the Baltimore County Federation of Public Employees and I represent over, a little over 500 active and retired correctional officers. While I know this doesn't affect retired correctional officers, I think it's important to mention. I'm also a correctional lieutenant with 27 years of service and I'm here to support Bill 5718. Correctional officers are extensively trained and certified in many public safety hats in what we do. We're police, fire, and corrections inside of our facility. And those skills can be used in the community, are used in the community. As you know, recruitment at the detention center has been more than a two-decade-old problem, that we have tried many different ways to help recruit and attract people. And I think this is another tool that will help enhance that ability. Because of this, I urge your support on Bill 5718. Simply put, the property tax credit is past due, very well deserved. Public safety employees aren't just public safety-minded people. They're public safety to the core and that's not something that you just turn off. They'll be public safety people in the communities that they live. Of course, we should want public safety employees shopping in our local stores, worshiping in our local churches, going to the local movies, volunteering in the local communities. It can only make Baltimore County a safer place. So again, I urge your support of this legislation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ripley. Next, I'd like...
Mr. Ripley, if it helped this proposal actually become law, would you support a sunset provision? That was, it would expire after a certain number of years?
We would want, obviously, our recruitment and retention to, our recruitment and retention packages to be competitive. And at this point, we're at, we're in a, we're in a beginning stage, obviously, with three other jurisdictions now passing legislation, that we must remain competitive. So I, you know, I can't say whether we can think about or discuss sunset clauses when we're in the, when we're in the beginning of this kind of legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ripley. Mr. Cole Weston.
I thought they were already going to do for five years. That was the original plan, wasn't it, five years? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Cole Weston. I'm president of Baltimore County Fraternal Order Police Lodge Number Four. We represent all the active and retired members of Baltimore County Police Department, equalling over 3,100 people. I'm also here in support of Bill 5718, the property tax credit for police officers. You've got some other people that are going to speak and, you know, I don't want to be repetitive, but the fact of the matter is, I think it is significant with regards to what Mr. Ripley already spoke about and what Councilman Katz spoke about, about having our public safety officers stay in the communities where they police. And it's not an eight-hour shift, right? They always have the eyes, the ears, and they make a decision as to whether a reaction is appropriate, what type of action that should be. I think people that live in communities in Baltimore County are proud to say a Baltimore County police officer lives in their street or lives in their community. And that's a good thing. And if we can expand on that, I think that helps all of us continue to make Baltimore County a safe, comfortable place. The economics of it, again, has been mentioned, but clearly participating in the local economy, we don't want our folks going to Bel Air and Westminster and going to the movies there and shopping there and get gas there and, you know, going to the restaurants there. We want them going to those locations that are rich with opportunity right here in Baltimore County and get them to stay here. From a competitive standpoint, without question, it has passed in Howard County and Anne Rundle County and in Baltimore City. It's starting to appear in their literature with regards to their ability to recruit. This metropolitan area right now is at a very pivotal time and it's very important that Baltimore County maintain its ability to bring the best and the brightest so that we don't start an erosion that we can't overcome from. So I would ask for your support on this important piece of legislation. And if you have any questions?
Same question.
Yeah, so... The chair recognizes Councilman Marks.
Sorry.
So, you know, the question was related to whether there should be a sunset or, and
I would say a reevaluation at a later date, which would make sense. So it's a three-year phase in, so maybe at the end of it, maybe an eight-year period, let's say, so, because there's a three-year phase in for it to fully take effect. Should there be some sort of study to conclude? Has it been beneficial? Has it helped us with recruiting and bringing the best and the brightest? Has it helped us, so when people graduate the academy and after two years, they say, you know what, I'm leaving to a surrounding county or God forbid, a surrounded state, do they say, you know what, I'm staying here. I'm going to raise my family in Baltimore County, I'm going to participate in the local economy. I appreciate that this is something that's available to me and my response to that is to take up residence here. So do I think it's fair to evaluate after an appropriate period of time to see that it's been successful in all of our services? Sure, I would welcome that.
Councilwoman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mr. Weston, thank you for coming in on behalf of your members of the FOP. Two things I want to talk about, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was a conversation that we were having earlier amongst ourselves, the council members, recruitment. Someone had said that the police were having a very hard time recruiting applicants and I've been told that that's not true. So could you set the record straight on how many people actually apply for the Baltimore County Police Department and how many people actually graduate and become police officers each year?
Okay, so you can look at the statistics in multiple ways and you could talk about how many people show an initial interest and that's a big number. And then there's a drop-off, a tremendous drop-off of how many people actually start participating in the first test that's available. And then there's a weed-out period. I think what's more significant that we're seeing now that we haven't seen in recent years is the amount of people that are either washing out of the academy or not making it, concluding probation. So for a variety of reasons, of whether they didn't have the ability to make it through the rigorous academic, what's required of them, whether they determined maybe law enforcement wasn't quite the right fit for them. But we're talking, and I can give you the statistics, over 30 people in the last 18 months who we put the time in to do a background and go through all the different elements of becoming a police officer and we found out it's, it didn't work and it's gone. So there's a tremendous amount of resources that were committed to it...
Right.
...to try and give them that opportunity. And those numbers we weren't seeing in the past. Those numbers didn't exist five and 10 years ago. So, you know, we're participating in a lateral class program right now and we've done another one not that long ago. If a jurisdiction's doing lateral classes, they can't keep up. They're chasing it. Right? We would normally have two recruit classes a year, anywhere between 40 to 55, depending upon the attrition.
Right.
So there's a window with some flexibility to say, you know what, we only have 40 openings? Let's put in, let's put in 42 or 43, give us a buffer if we lose a couple.
Right.
Right? We have 55 openings, let's put in 56, give us a little buffer. When we have to venture into going and trying to get other officers from other jurisdictions, it's because they can't keep up with the attrition, the attrition of retirements, resignations, or leaving employment for other reasons.
But is that, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a recruitment issue, though? I mean, people are coming and applying, it's just how you're, if you're retaining them or not.
Well, so the recruitment pool, right? So if, if the other surrounding jurisdictions are recruiting people who stay and are committed to their employment with that jurisdiction, it is. That's who we're all fighting for.
And I do understand the importance of having police officers in our communities. I have several in my community and it makes me feel good that they're there and I know who they are. But are the numbers less than 40% police officers actually live in Baltimore County, who work for Baltimore County? Do 60% of them live outside the jurisdiction?
I saw the report done by the auditor's office with regards to the numbers, so I don't know how much they attributed those numbers to each specific field of public safety. So, right, I would suggest that that's accurate for the membership that I represent and it might even be a little less. I can look at that, but I'd be interested, they gave a total number in the fiscal note with regards to all public safety. So what numbers they gave with regards to corrections, sheriffs, and firefighters, I'm not exactly sure.
So I think we discussed in one of our earlier meetings, this tax credit would be more of a, to use for recruitment because realistically, people that already work for the police department that live in Carroll County or like Mr. Rose that lives in another county, they're not coming back to Baltimore County. You know, if they have 10 years left on their mortgage or 20 years left on their mortgage, chances are they're not coming back. This is really just important for your members as a recruitment tool as you have new police officers come in to have this tax break available. It would be a good recruitment tool, correct?
Not just recruitment, I mean, it's multiple, there's multiple layers to this. One is recruitment, get them here. Then two, after they have 18 months, two years on the job, and they're going to get their starter home, do we want their starter home to be in Middle River or in Aberdeen? Or, you follow me? So we want them to stay here. And then once they stay here and get established here and start families here and their kids go to school here, then they're staying in Baltimore County. And I think that, you know, also dovetails into looking at to see if it was successful.
Right.
So you could sit here eight years from now, somebody could sit here and say, all right, eight years ago, there were this many Baltimore County police officers that worked for Baltimore County Police Department, lived in Baltimore County, and here we are eight years later and hopefully it's 400 more, hopefully it's 600 more. Would it entice somebody necessarily to leave that lives in another county at this point to reroute their whole household?
Probably not.
And take their kids out of school?
Right, probably not.
I don't, I don't think that's realistic.
So this is a moving forward?
Right, recruiting, having them stay here, get their starter homes here, continue to reside in Baltimore County.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Weston. Next, John Quirk. Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and members of the county council. I'm John Quirk, Secretary of Treasury of the Baltimore County Fire Department, Article thirteen eleven, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify on this afternoon on the merits of Council Bill fifty-seven eighteen. I'd like to thank Councilman Koch for recognizing the efforts and the sacrifices of the public safety personnel of Baltimore County and putting this property tax credit forward. I am a county resident, taxpayer. I live in the great Fighting First District with Tom Quirk, and I'm proud to say we have outstanding police and fire services and many other services and amenities in Baltimore County that I think only some other counties can really, I use the word, dream of. Too often, I'll speak about this as the- for our new members, they come- many of them do not come from Baltimore County, but from other counties and states, and it is difficult for new hire career to, at times, to afford property in Baltimore County. Yet these are the kind of people we should want live in our county. We cannot put a firefighter, police station on every corner, but the next best thing is having highly-trained firefighters, police officers, as your next-door neighbors. And while county-wide callbacks are rare events, one does not have to look to recent events to see examples of emergencies in which would be beneficial to having firefighters and police officers within the borders of our county, close at hand, ready to respond. We believe that a tax- property tax credit for firefighters and police officers would be a valuable recruitment tool and everything it makes possible for Baltimore County fires to start and raise families here rather than in southern Pennsylvania, Carroll County, and on the eastern shore. Nearly most of the departments now currently hiring, and it kind of seems like it's non-stop, whether it's just a trend, a short-term trend, but we contend for these employees with other jurisdictions. And being one of the first to offer property tax credit will continue to help Baltimore County stay among the leaders as pertains to overall compensation and benefits. Our organization is prepared to work with the administration and the council as you begin deliberation and are available during and after scheduled work sessions for questions or information. In the end, we want to see a sensible bill passed, one that honors the commitment and sacrifice of our hard-working men and women of the Career Service, Police, Sheriff, Corrections, and our Volunteer cadre. So on behalf of over one thousand members of our IF Local thirteen eleven, we respectfully request a fair ball vote on fifty-seven eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quirk. Any questions? Councilman Marks?
Same question. What's your thoughts on a sunset provision? Could it expire after a certain number of years?
Well, I mean, not to reiterate what Cole said, I think when we look at it, as this bill is written, it's a three-year sunset, to go back and look after a certain timeframe, whatever that is, maybe eight, ten years, and to see if it did it work, you know, did our new members that came in, did they stay and start buying homes, that kind of thing. One thing I think as a sunset provision to think about is, for the Career Service, it does kind of sunset, so if I retire in four years from now, I don't- the property tax credit does not carry one for me. So there is a aroundabout sunset provision for that end of the bill. That makes sense? But to go back and I think to reevaluate, I think that's fair.
Thank you.
No other questions? Joel McCray?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Joel McCray. I am a volunteer firefighter and here in support of Bill fifty-seven eighteen. Most of you on the council know who I am. I'm an advocate for volunteers. I've been a volunteer for twenty-eight years. I've been a lifelong resident of Baltimore County. And I got to tell you, this is a fabulous bill as far as recruitment and retention for volunteers go. The cycle of a volunteer is, fortunately, we get them in when they're young, very excited and want to participate. They take many, many hours of training as a young person normally when they come in. Then the cycle is, they go to school, they get married, begin to raise a family. But unfortunately, they cannot always move back into the communities where they came from, where we need them the most, for a number of reasons, one of which is just the cost of living in the communities they come from. Most of the volunteer services are in rural areas, which are getting very expensive. And I will tell you, as my history is, I've been president of the Baltimore County Volunteer Fire Association a couple of times. I am currently president of the Long Green Volunteer Fire Company, and our biggest challenge is recruiting and retaining members. So I thank Councilman Koch for introduction of this bill and look forward to your support.
Any questions?
I have a comment or a question. Are you the only one, Joel, are you the only one speaking on behalf of the volunteers?
No, there's Jack Amrane, and I believe one other speaker is a volunteer.
Okay. Well, I'll hear from the rest of the volunteers, I do have a couple of comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Jack Amrane.
My name is Jack Amrane. I've been a resident of Baltimore County for thirty-five years. I'll correct that, forty-five years. Forgot I had a birthday. I prepared a little bit, but I'm somewhat disorganized today. Just returned from vacation and have a family issue going on, so please bear with me. I look- I'm here to support Council Bill fifty-seven eighteen, Mr. Koch's bill. As it's already been stated, this is in surrounding counties, recruitment and retention. We are extremely competitive. I also looked up and found out that this occurs in Ohio, New York, and Pennsylvania. So Maryland's not the only place that is doing such a thing. Looking at the numbers that were provided in the work session minutes, total up to about twelve point seven million dollars in the first three years. Twelve million dollars is, to some of us, a lot of money, to others, not very much. Looking at some of the grants and things that have been given out and tax benefits to businesses over the last ten years, twelve point seven million is very minimal compared to a minimal outlay for what you're going to get back. There are over twenty-five hundred volunteers in this county, and they give a lot, but it's becoming tougher. The training requirements get tougher every year, so we lose many, many volunteers. I've been a volunteer, I'll be starting my thirtieth year as a volunteer in Baltimore County in October, twenty-nine active years. I live and work in Baltimore County. I do also work for the fire service here, so I do this pretty much twenty-four seven. My family is considered moving. We're looking to get a bigger house. I'd like to have a garage. And unfortunately, I can't necessarily afford what I want in this county. We're looking at other counties. I would hate for that to happen. I would love to stay in Baltimore County, and a tax break would certainly help me. I recognize that we do have a retirement, but unfortunately, you have to have twenty-five years of active service to be eligible for retirement, and that's currently only three hundred dollars a month. Very few volunteers make it past five years, much less twenty-five. I am currently pre-eligible for that. I can't collect for another ten years, there's an age requirement. I want to tell you a story about a good friend of mine, one of my mentors. Thirty-two years as a volunteer in Baltimore County, thirty-two years. He died when he was fifty-one. He never collected a dime. He was unable to get anything. He got a five-thousand-dollar burial benefit. He got nothing from the county other than the state LoSAP, which I thank you for supporting that. Volunteerism is down twelve percent, according to National Volunteer Fire Council. There are mergers due to lack of volunteers. Companies are- I'm a member of the first company to do an actual, two companies into a new company. There had been other mergers in the county. I'm also the dive team commander. Our members come from all over, including out of this county. It would be nice to have them in this county closer to where. Very few volunteer companies are able to provide EMS service now without paying their members, so the volunteer EMS has pretty much gone to the wayside. And I know I'm running out of time. Oh, one last thing I just saw today, bear with me the extra second. Joppa Magnolia Volunteer Fire Company. Joppa Magnolia borders Baltimore County. They're just north of Kingsville, White Marsh. Some of you are shaking your head, you know exactly where that is. I just learned today that Joppa Magnolia is closing their station due to lack of volunteers. They are a first-degree response into my neighborhood, into some of your neighborhoods, and into Baltimore County in general. They can't maintain that station because they don't have enough members, and I think a benefit such as this would certainly help in retaining long-term members. I thank you for your time. I know, Councilman Marks, but I support the sunset. As John Quirk said, as a paid member, it would certainly go away. As a volunteer, I would think this would help retain people staying in Baltimore County. I agree with Mr. Weston that, you know, a review and any financial thing should certainly take place after about five years. Are there any other questions?
Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Jack.
Good to see you.
Thank you for your service to the county. I guess I have a few comments or questions. I'm struggling a little bit with the volunteers because I guess the key word that Councilman Koch has used over and over is first responders. And I know that part of volunteer service, not everybody is a first responder. You have many people that do a variety of things within the companies, and a lot of them are administrative. And not that those things aren't important, they certainly are important, but you're not risking your life when you're the bookkeeper, keeping track of LoSAP, or you're in charge of renting the hall, or, you know, fundraising. So I'm struggling with why a volunteer who's not a first responder would receive this tax credit.
So I think I can put some light on, at least I'm going to try to. First of all, first responder is a term that kind of, in my mind, came out after September eleventh in two thousand and one, and that was just pretty much everybody who goes to the calls. A lot of people don't really understand. They might think first responder is the first person who picks up and actually goes to the scene that helps you, or just everybody who's in that fire station, an EMS person, a firefighter, a rescue technician. It's kind of a very generic term. I do agree with you in the fact that administrative support doesn't necessarily go out and risk their lives. However, in my experience, when I joined in nineteen eighty-nine, our administrative personnel were absolutely one-hundred percent people who had been previous actual responders for twenty-five and thirty years. We still have, as you know, Don Chilcoe, he's eighty-three years old. Daddy Don drove a fire engine for fifty-three years until he was unable to physically, because of age, drive that fire engine anymore. But he comes to the firehouse every Monday night, takes out the trash and fills the soda machine. But he lives in Baltimore County. He put in fifty-three years. And I'm not saying that everybody is administrative, is in that capacity, but for individuals like him, that would be a way of rewarding his twenty-five years or fifty-three years of active service. A lot of the administrators are such that they have medical issues or injuries, or they're just retired and they can't physically do the response anymore. So I agree with what you're saying, they're not putting their lives at risk, but some of them have for many, many years unrecognized, even before we had LoSAP.
And I do understand that, but it's not part of the recruitment there, that it's not really about a reward, it's about what's happening now and making sure that our members stay in Baltimore County, and it's good for your recruitment to do so. Because I do understand that the recruitment has been down for the volunteer services over the last couple of years.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I don't know that necessarily recruitment itself is going down. Recruitment has been very-
Oh, I thought that's what Joel said.
Retention.
Retention.
As Mr. Police President reported, it's easy to throw stuff out there. Come look, you've seen their videos. Come out, this is exciting. Come out, look what we do. People come in the door, and then they find out, oh, I have to take a hundred-and-ten-hour class to be an EMT, I have to take a forty-hour class to be hazmat certified, I have to do two hundred hours to even ride the fire engine. Recruitment's easy. Bring a lot of people in. I can't give you exact numbers, but I can tell you, you know, one particular company probably gets a hundred applications a year. But we don't get a hundred people to stay. You may get twenty people that actually fill out that application, get voted in, attend training, and it's six to nine months before you can even ride a piece of emergency apparatus. We lose so many people in that six to nine months. If they knew that there was some light at the end of the tunnel, that getting through this, that there would be some, I'll call it retention reward of a property tax credit, they may be more willing to get through that initial period. And again, just speaking for myself, not for any volunteer association-
Well, it is a volunteer service.
I do believe that recruitment is not necessarily as big a problem as retention.
Right.
And as Joel said, many people, a lot of my friends that joined in nineteen eighty-nine, I'm the only one left that lives in Baltimore County, because they got married, they had kids. A good friend of mine got hired by Baltimore City as a firefighter. He got married and bought a house just over the county line in Kingsville, actually, Falston. So he can come back now and then to volunteer, but he can raise his family up there because it's a little more affordable to him. We have a lot of members, as Joel said, you want to try to get them at eighteen to twenty to kind of get that hook in. But they fall in love, they go to school, they move, you know. In Perry Hall, White Marsh, Kingsville, it's very difficult for an eighteen-to-twenty-year-old to afford a house in Perry Hall, Kingsville, or White Marsh, where they can just jump the line and go to Joppa or Abingdon, you know. And then they like volunteering, that they'll join a local company up there. And as I believe somebody said, Anne Rundle is already passing this, you know, the southern part of Baltimore County, I'm sure they have the same issues that we do in the northeast. Somebody from, you know, Woodlawn or English Council, maybe, they're eighteen, they join, they're, I love it, I get a tattoo, I'm a firefighter in Baltimore County, you know, and then they turn twenty, and they move to Anne Rundle County because it's maybe more affordable, or they get a job there and they move their family there. Now, I've lived here, as I said, I very rarely ever leave Baltimore County unless I'm going on vacation. So all of my business, you know, all my money, all my economic diversity is in Baltimore County, and if I were to leave, that would go somewhere else. And I'm just one of twenty-five hundred. So that three-point-two million dollars that would be given out in tax credit, I'm not an actuary, but I would say of that three-point-two million dollars that would be given out in tax credit, a good portion of that, probably seventy percent or more, would come right back into Baltimore County as revenue.
Sure. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much. This concludes today's work session. Any questions or comments for anyone? Thank you very much, everybody, for coming in. Thank you, have a great day. Stay dry.